Call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette? Mr. Cockrell? Mr. Allen?
Yes. Before we begin the meeting, we want to welcome the heck of a crowd we got here tonight. Thank you for coming. But first off, before we start, we are missing two board members this evening. And I want to congratulate our board clerk, Dr. Brandy Roulette, for obtaining her doctorate degree. And also, our vice president, Mr. Cockrell, is not here tonight because he is graduating tonight, earning an additional degree this evening, so I want to congratulate him. Okay, next will be the board member, Dr. Williams, please.
As we begin this meeting, let us pause for a sixty-second moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or engage in other silent activity. Thank you.
Next will be the pledge of allegiance, be led by fifth-grade student from Timber Ridge, Isabel Ahmad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Isabel. Mr. Perry's going to ask you a bunch of questions, so be prepared.
First off, how many days are left in school?
Ten.
I knew you would know. Who's your teacher this year?
Ms. Heeps.
And who is it now?
Ms. Heeps.
Ms. Eames?
Heeps.
Heeps. What's your favorite subject or your best subject in school?
My favorite subject's math. My best subject is social studies.
I like it. I like it. What are you looking forward to for the sixth grade? Going into middle school?
My electives.
Your electives, yeah. That is awesome. Well, we thank you for being here tonight. Do you have a special guest? Any family members come?
My mom and my brother.
Where are they at now? They're right there, yeah. Can I get a picture with you?
Yeah.
All right.
Isabel, you may have had the most fans ever at a board meeting in the history. Mr. Perry, I must admit, it kind of feels like we're at a pep rally, seven board meetings. It's pretty, this is pretty awesome.
Love it.
Been my best one in fifteen years, but it's exciting. Next item will be the approval of the April fourteenth board meeting minutes. Any discussion? Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from the April fourteenth meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item will be the special board meeting minutes from the Bond Cell on May the sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Any discussion? Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Mr. Elkins.
All right, good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. Dr. Williams, it's a pleasure to meet you. I'm Community Relations Coordinator Chase Elkins for the district. It's an honor to be here. It's always an honor to be in front of you and to bring forth money that's coming into our district. I have with me Ms. Jenny Dolan, who's the president of the Broken Arrow Public Schools Foundation, who's going to present something. We have a longstanding tradition in Broken Arrow, and this is really exciting.
Good evening. I am here to present a check for ten thousand dollars to the leadership program for project graduation. We know they do a really good job of keeping our seniors safe.
Ms. Dolan, it's always great to see you, but you always seem to be bringing gifts, and we appreciate that.
I, that's why I'm up.
Absolutely. I just want to again say thank you and appreciate your leadership in that area. And you've been committing a long, how many years now have you been with the foundation?
On the board, I think eight.
Eight years. So that's exciting. So we appreciate your all's leadership, and you've done a great job, so thank you. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we do have to vote on the acceptance of that donation, so is there any discussion? Entertain a motion.
I move that we accept this donation from the Broken Arrow Public School Foundation.
I, second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Peterson, this is probably why everybody's here, huh?
Yes, good evening.
Exciting stuff.
Yes. If I could ask Ms. Green and Ms. Orr to head up this way. We are so excited to announce that we have two more schools that have been awarded the Blue Ribbon Beacon Designation. So this is a nationally validated recognition celebrating excellence in education. This honor reflects their outstanding performance across nine key areas, including rigorous curriculum, innovative teaching, technology integration, strong leadership, and making meaningful family and community partnerships. This award highlights their commitment to academic achievement, creating a positive and inclusive school culture, and their dedication to continuous growth. So I just want to give them a big congratulations, but I also wanted to have Ms. Green and Ms. Orr also just be able to recognize the hard work of all of the teachers that are here tonight. So Ms. Orr, Liberty is up first.
Good evening. I just want to take, and I'm sorry, I've been a little under the weather, take this opportunity to the Liberty staff that was able to come tonight. They have worked so hard at this. It's been a two-plus-year process for us, and they didn't give up, and they, the best thing about it, when I asked them, like, what did you like about this process? Was that it highlighted all the great things we're already doing, and then it just let us be real targeted on areas that we needed to improve. And then it goes right along with the strategic focus, so when we've done our strategic focus work, it has just seamlessly gone right into that, so it is because of all of them that we were able to get this honor.
And the process isn't easy at all.
No.
And you have to be vulnerable to...
You do, to criticism and to your areas of weakness, and be willing to be open and to be challenged and take on that challenge.
Be the best we can be.
Yeah, exactly.
Awesome.
I'm a little shorter than her. Mr. Perry, President Allen, and board members, I just want to first of all say thank you for supporting us in this process. There is a financial aspect of this, and so I'm just so thankful that you guys invested in us. Timber Ridge has always had a culture of improvement, and so this just lined up with that so nicely. And I think the most powerful thing for us was the conversations that it sparked. And it, kind of like Ms. Orr said, it just really helped us target the things that we're doing well and what are some areas that we can improve in, so I couldn't be more proud of my team. They've worked so hard, and it came to the benefit of our students and families, so I'm just super proud of them.
And I'd be remiss, there's a school back there, Leisure Park, thank you for coming and supporting that. That's awesome.
Well, I just want to congratulate each and one of you, every one of you, and also want to thank you. Just know that our board is super proud of all your efforts. We're appreciative of all your efforts. Don't listen to the noise that's being said out of Oklahoma City. Know that we love you, we care about you, and we appreciate the job that you do, and we're going to continue to fight for each and every one of you. So we really want to thank you. That's why Broken Arrow's special, because of people like you. That's why we're busting at the seams for people wanting to come here, because of each and every one of you. So I just can't thank you enough, and it's, this is exciting stuff. I wish the politicians that came and sat right over there, hearing all their gripes and complaints about public education, could come and see this right here, because this is what it's about. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Y'all may want to stay for the next couple items soon.
Yeah, these next ones aren't bad. Okay. Well, to kind of tag along with the thank yous there, I want to discuss to the board, you know, our board tries very hard to show our appreciation for our teachers and our staff any way we can. You know, there is an, there is not an unlimited bucket of money, but thank God for our CFO that we have here to help us stay in good shape. We do have some money, and the board does feel that when we have that money, we need to spend it on you. So I'm going to make the recommendation to the board that we approve a one-time discretionary three percent retention stipend for all employees of Broken Arrow Public Schools for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Any discussion? Go right ahead.
I think perks are nice, culture's great, but cash is best, so we fully support this.
Yes, I think this is the greatest investment we could make.
Well, I made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, for all you wonderful teachers, we want to show you another appreciation. We would like to give a one-time discretionary two percent Christmas stipend to all employees for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. I'd like to make that motion for approved. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Oh, who said, I couldn't hear.
Second.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. There's a lot of cheering.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, and our final item of this section. I would like to motion that we approve a one-time discretionary three percent sped appreciation stipend calculated according to their base pay salary for twenty-five, twenty-six for all special education teachers in Broken Arrow Public Schools. Oh, I'm sorry. Speech path, pathologists, and our psychologists, and all the above in special ed. All right?
Yeah.
Y'all got a second?
I second.
Got a motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you all. Well deserved. You all have a great rest of your year, and we'll see you at graduation next Monday. Next item, Ms. Eneth.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. Tonight, I have the pleasure of recommending for hire Ms. Jan Wade to serve as our Director of Accounting. Ms. Wade has over twenty-five years of school business experience and extensive knowledge with our financial software syllogist, and we are very excited to recommend her for this position.
I heard her last name Wade. What was her first name?
Jan.
Jan. Any discussion? Entertain a motion.
I move that we accept Ms. Jan Wade for this position.
I second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Mr. Stecker.
Good evening, everyone. I am seeking your approval for the offer of employment to Crystal Barber to serve as Executive Director of Professional Standards. About Ms. Barber, she started her public school career in Oklahoma City as a Spanish teacher, and then moved into an assistant principal there. She became Assistant Principal of Broken Arrow Freshman Academy in two thousand sixteen, was promoted then to the grade-level principal at the Broken Arrow High School, and then in two thousand twenty was named Head Principal. She has served our district wonderfully. She has done an incredible job as a high school principal the last five years. Her experience gained as a high school principal, as well as her attention to details and the ability to put process in place will serve our district well if approved in this role.
Any discussion? I'd like to thank Ms. Barber for her efforts and hard work and dedication to our high school. She's done an amazing job. It's, it's great walking that campus, and her leadership is definitely noticeable. And we'll appreciate that. Entertain a motion.
I move that we accept Ms. Barber to move to this position. I'm sure the high school is going to really miss her, but I think this will be great.
A second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Mr. Allen, Ms. Barber is here. She here? Stand up, Ms. Barber. Floor is yours. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item, Ms. Dias.
All right, good evening, Mr. Perry, and President Allen, and members of the board. I have a few recommendations for your approval tonight. The first one is for Kristen Graves to serve as the Executive Director of Instructional Data and Curriculum Development. This is a new position. We were looking at a lot of our student data and growth and the progress we're making in the district, and we found one piece that we think we can continue to improve upon, and that is using that data to look at our students and how we can make instruction most effective, look at those PLCs, also look at our STEM and robotic programs, CTE. So it's going to encompass a multitude of different aspects of curriculum. Ms. Graves is here tonight. She is coming back home to Broken Arrow. She went to, prior to be the Director of Teaching and Learning, but before that, she served as a principal in Broken Arrow, an assistant principal, and has a lot of awesome years of teaching experience. We're super excited to recommend her for this position.
Any discussion?
Amazing. Is it, this is a new role?
Correct. This is a new position. Yes, yes.
Sounds like it's much needed.
Yes, yes. We're excited about it, and it's just going to continue to make us better, and I'll share more at the board retreat this summer, but we are looking forward to using her expertise to get into classrooms and schools and help us.
I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve this new position, and is it Ms. Graves?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. First time making a motion.
A second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, Ms. Grace. I'm sorry, Ms. Graves. Graves, I apologize. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Ms. Graves is a BA grad, too.
That's right.
There we go. Oh, congratulations. Welcome home.
Okay.
Ms. Dias.
Yes, so the next one is a recommendation for a person to take on a new position. It's actually two new positions, and I want to just explain it real briefly to you. So, yeah, we've always had Executive Director of Special Education. We used to have two Executive Directors of Special Education, a secondary and an elementary, and a few years ago, we consolidated that to one position. Ms. Thornton, who has been in that position, has done an amazing job. I mean, I cannot tell you the hours she works, the students that she helps, the parents that she helps, the community members. But we have finally decided that we really need to divide that back into two positions. We looked at some of our data. Over the last five years, we've grown over five hundred and sixty-six students with special needs. We've doubled over our self-contained classrooms for students with pervasive autism in the elementary from fourteen classrooms to twenty-eight classrooms. And then our STEP program, which is the high school, post-high school program, which serves nineteen-to-twenty-one-year-old students, has, will have forty-one students next year alone, but within the next years past that, probably up to a hundred students. So along with these students comes additional IEPs and teacher needs and resources. And so although Ms. Thornton has done an amazing job, we want to make sure we're providing that support at the school level. So this first position is Executive Director of Secondary Special Education, which is Ms. Daleen Thornton, just a change in her title.
Any discussion? I'm sure Ms. Thornton is, is excited about the help.
Greatly, I think.
Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Ms. Thornton for this position.
A second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Thornton, congratulations. You know, one thing, too, I would challenge as we continue on through next year is telling our story of our growth so people have a true understanding what that growth looks like, because, you know, sometimes when we try to advocate at the capital level for our local representatives, they just think we're whining and not truly know what our growth is, and we have needs. And if we can tell that story, it'd be very beneficial.
I agree. Thank you. We'll do that, and Ms. Thornton has joined Dr. James a couple times there to start those conversations, and just the support that we like to give those students, you know, it's a lot, and so it's good to communicate that.
Well, and we don't want to create more work for you, but it would be nice to have some sort of fact sheet that just does a reminder of these cats down there that this is what's going on at Broken Arrow.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Dias. Next item.
Okay, so my last agenda item is with that secondary position, now we're going to have an Executive Director of Elementary Special Education, and I'm honored and excited to recommend Ms. Bridget Powell for this position. As you know, she has served as the Executive Director of Enrollment for the District Level, has done an amazing job. And before that, she was actually an elementary principal, an elementary assistant principal in school sites that had special programs. She was an elementary teacher. So her elementary expertise, along with all those relationships she already has with our principals and teachers, is going to be so beneficial, and we're really excited for her to transition to this position on our team.
Where has she been serving already?
She's been at the enrollment, Executive Director of Enrollment Services. I'm stealing her from Mr. Bowser.
You guys are making a lot of people mad.
I have, I have.
You're making a lot of people mad, and happy at the same time.
Just, for elementary, is that starting at pre-K or how early is that starting?
Correct. She will also support pre-K.
Okay.
We have Ms. Boker, who does pre-K alone instructionally, but with the special ed, yes, we do have those self-contained sped classes at the pre-K. She'll help support those. Thank you for the clarification.
Any discussion? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I move that we approve.
A second.
For this position.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Powell, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Um, just, I, I just want to thank Mr. Bowser and my current teammates. They have taught me a lot. They've loved me for the learning as an executive director, and they've put up with my crazy ideas and encouraged me, so I'm just really grateful. I've, I've grown, and I'm, I'm ready to take on this new challenge and, and join the instructional team and work with them, and I'm really excited about it. And my biggest cheerleader, which I believe is here, they're always with me. They're just, um, my whole world, so.
Well, congratulations and best of luck. Thank you. Mr. Sappington.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. Tonight, we are seeking your approval to hire Kristy Smith as the Executive Principal of Broken Arrow High School. Mrs. Smith has over thirty years of experience in education, working as a special ed teacher, a coach, an assistant principal, a freshman principal at Norman High, and most recently, as the Associate Principal of Academics at Broken Arrow High School. With your approval, Mrs. Smith is excited and ready to take on this new leadership role.
Any discussion?
Well, that is some big shoes to fill there.
Very much.
I make a motion that we approve Kristy Smith for this position.
A second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Is she here this evening?
She is. She's right behind me.
Congratulations, Ms. Smith, and best of luck. That's, that's a monster. You're going to do great. Mr. Sappington.
Okay, the next individual I am seeking your approval for is Mr. Paul Hicks as an Assistant Principal at a secondary site. Mr. Hicks is currently working at Locust Grove Public Schools as the Dean of Students, Athletic Director, and Head Football Coach. When you meet Mr. Hicks, you realize very quickly, he has a servant heart, and he's eager and wants to learn and develop as a leader. So with your approval, we are excited to have Mr. Hicks join the BA family.
Discussion. Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Mr. Hicks for this position.
A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Mr. Hicks here?
He is.
Thought I saw him over there. Mr. Hicks, congratulations. I heard a lot of wonderful things about you, and I've watched you a little bit over where you're at for a couple more minutes, and we just wanna welcome you to the Tiger family.
Absolutely.
Next item, Mr. Bowser.
Good evening, Mr. Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. So with the departure of Ms. Powell from enrollment, we have a vacancy, and so tonight, I'm asking for your approval of Ms. Rachel Kaiser to fill that role as Executive Director of Enrollment Services. Ms. Kaiser comes to us with 21-plus years of administrative experience. The last four years is our Director of Health Services, the four years prior to that as Principal at Creekwood Elementary. Everywhere she has gone, she has excelled and done a fantastic job, and I have no doubt that she will continue the good work that Ms. Powell has, has done at her role. So I'm asking for your approval.
Any discussion?
I just love that we have a talented pipeline to fill, to fill all these seats, and that's really cool. So otherwise, I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Kaiser here?
She is.
Ms. Kaiser, you were, you helped with our mental health and all those things, right? I, I know from our board focus, we wanted to really focus on mental health for our students, staff, and you did a wonderful job and helped us get to where we are and where we were very lacking. And we appreciate all your hard work and effort. You have any guests this evening?
I do, although I'm a really tall, so it's great.
All right. Mr. Blackburn, you are up, sir.
So it's my turn. All right. Mr. Allen, Mr. Perry, Board of Education. As you can tell, we have big shoes to fill. And so tonight, I'm hoping that you will approve of Ms. Tiffany Green to replace Ms. Kaiser. She'll be, if you don't know, she was very creative in regards to the Tiger Connect program that we have. She served on the committee and helped develop that. In addition to that, Ms. Green has 19 years of administrative work in the district, 25 years in education. Most importantly, she's a mother of three that are all attending Broken Arrow Schools. I have no doubt that she will not only fill those shoes, but she will help us continue to move forward.
Any discussion? Dr. Williams, to your point earlier, though, I'm sorry, there's a tremendous amount of talent around here. This is exciting.
Yeah, seeing as someone steps into a new role, we've got a talented person to take their place, and that's pretty awesome. I think that speaks a lot highly to the district and everyone involved.
That is really great. I move that we approve Ms. Green for this position.
I second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, I saw her run around like she always does.
Yeah, she was here earlier.
Ms. Green, just know that the board supports you strongly in your efforts in any way we can. That mental health is a very, very important item to our board, so we wanna continue to make the best improvements we can and provide the best services we can for our students. So thank you. Mr. Rice.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. I am seeking your approval this evening for the offer of employment to Jason Levitt as the Director of Operations. Mr. Levitt currently is over the entire Ponca City Schools Operations Department, and we're looking forward to bringing him here and just adding to the robust operations that we have currently in Broken Arrow.
Any discussion?
I just have to say, as Mother's Day at church the other day, they had a video of somebody applying for the position of Director of Operations, and it was mom. You know, who takes care of everything, so Director of Operations is a big job.
It is.
I move to approve.
I second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rice.
You're welcome.
He's not here this evening, is he? I thought you guys said that earlier.
He, he is not. He is, he's actually doing the right thing. He is celebrating his mom, she's retiring this year, and so he is at the board meeting in Ponca City celebrating her, so.
Thank you. Mr. Perry and, and your cabinet staff and everyone, I just wanna commend you. I mean, you brought a whole lot of winners to the, to the board meeting tonight with these, that's exciting.
We've got a great team and just so many talented people across the district that it's, it's just another layer of people stepping up to bigger roles. We have some people retiring over the past couple years, and it's opened up new things as we grow as a district. It's, talking about the legislators, it takes more staff to educate a child today. And we're filling that void and spending it on the right things, and I'm excited with the, the new leadership. It's always good, it's refreshing. They bring a new vision to the area and make it their own, so it's a good day.
You're correct, I remember having that meeting the other day and having Ms. Thompson keep her eyes on me so I didn't say anything bad, but with those legislators and it just, with the societal issues that have been, the burden's been put upon the district to resolve and fix, and it does. It takes, it takes more resources and more staff than ever before to educate the students, so. You know, I know I will never apologize for doing what's best for our kids, so, and I appreciate you and your staff and everyone else.
Thank you.
Looking forward to watching these people do great things. Next item or comments from the public, we have none. Next item will be the approval of the general consent items 24 through 147. Any discussion on any of those items? I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept these general consent items.
A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. One second, Mr. Leach, I'm waiting on that. Mr. Leach?
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. It's not my first item I recommend for your approval, contracts for the leisure park walk-in cooler replacement to the lowest responsible bidder and to assign such construction contracts to the Merrick Group and to approve the amendment to the construction management contract establishing a new GMP or guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $300,000, and to authorize the Director of Construction Services to approve or disapprove changes to the trade contract within the GMP. All bidding was conducted pursuant to the Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act. The cost of the district will be paid for with child nutrition funds.
Was this a different amount from before, I'm assuming? 'Cause didn't we have this item before on an agenda?
There was a pre-construction services contract.
Okay.
So this is establishing the guaranteed maximum price for the project.
Thank you for that clarification.
Is this the one they had built onto it, but then you're doing more?
We're replacing the old original walk-in cooler with an entirely new unit.
Maybe thinking of warehouse cooler that we're adding on it?
Yeah, so that's, that's adding on to the, the big 5,000 square foot warehouse cooler is an entirely different project.
Sorry, thank you.
Of course.
Any other discussion? Entertainer motion.
I move to approve this item.
A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, next item, Mr. Leach.
Next item, I recommend for your approval the purchase of student and staff furniture for the fine arts renovation from L&amp;M Office Furniture for a total of $96,214.61 and paid for with general obligation bond funds. Furniture is being purchased off of the OU contract.
Mr. Leach, you took us on a tour of that, I don't remember how long ago it was. How close are they to finishing that today?
It's, it's a little bit further along since we toured the facility. So drywall finishing is taking place, they're real close to starting paint, but all of the spaces are defined, a lot of the tile work is probably 80% along. You know, the tile wainscote on the walls, it's looking really nice. You barely recognized it when we were there before.
Oh, there's no question.
It's a lot nicer now.
It's pretty amazing. So it'll be open for the fall?
Yes, sir.
This is very exciting.
That is, that's a heck
Much needed.
That's a heck of a facility.
Um, sorry, just, I'm not familiar with the OU contract, what is that?
So we're able to, to purchase items off of other state agencies negotiated contracts. It just helps, gives us a price break.
Thank you, bright swing.
I move to approve this purchase.
A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, next item, Mr. Leach.
My next item, I recommend for your approval the purchase of student furniture for the student furniture for the fine arts renovation from Wanger for a total of $55,807.66 and paid for with general obligation bond funds. Furniture is being purchased off of the Omnia contract.
What does that acronym stand for, if you, if you know?
That is a great question, sir, I'll get to you at the next meeting.
I'm assuming it's a state agency.
It's, it's a
Buying group, buying group?
Yes, it's a buying group, yes, sir.
Questions or discussion?
What's the difference between the two? This is for student furniture?
So the items from Wanger are particularly for instrument storage.
I move to approve.
A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Mr. Leach.
My last item, I recommend for your approval the purchase of staff furniture for the new south transportation hub from L&amp;M Office Furniture for a total of $58,664.79 and paid for with general obligation bond funds. And this is also being purchased off of the OU contract.
Thank you. Any discussion?
This is very exciting, too.
I move to approve.
A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Leach. Next item, Mr. Stecker.
Good evening again. This next item is information only tonight. It is our first reading of multiple revised policies from multiple sections of the Board of Education Policy Guide with the intent to bring back for the second reading and an action at that time during the June 2nd board meeting. Legal has reviewed these as well.
Any discussion or questions for Mr. Stecker? Okay, this is information only, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Next item's new business, we have none. Next item will be to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you all.